And received our Qantas Award for, from the city council. Thank you so much for your award. It's an amazing honor to know that someone sees potential in me as I go into political science major. And we always ask for a political science major being from city council. And also like to thank you so much for the gift to Paragras Bookstore. This year's been so crazy in a good way. I've been so busy trying to keep up on everything. It's nice to be reminded that sometimes it's okay to read something just for fun. Again, thanks you so much. God bless Erica Browning.
Nice note.
Any other petitions or communications? Any committee reports? I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations and no people speaking of matters not covered by legislation. I see no forms there. So council, before you, you have the legislative portion of the meetings where there are any additions or corrections. Otherwise, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. We move on to then to the legislative portion and Mrs. Noel, please read this by title and number only. And the resolutions for third reading is Resolution 2014-31.
Resolution number 2014-31. A resolution to grant an easement upon the public square to the Mount Vernon Nazarene University and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Fair.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I would like to ask for passage of Resolution 2014-31.
Second.
Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Fair.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of go around. I'd like to start with council first and if you have any type of comment or anything you'd want to say. And then Mayor, I'd defer to you last. And so Sam, do you have anything you want to?
All I would like to add, just to clarify some things that I think may not be clear in the minds of the public. There are two elements that have appeared either in our conversation or in reporting in local media. The first one is a reference to a security fence. And my fear is that the average citizen, when he hears those two words, "security fence", envisions barbed wire and chain link fence. That is exactly not what is going to be evident with the Curtis Hotel should we provide the easement and the project goes forward. I received clarification by calling Denny Taylor from the university and he made it very clear that there'll be no chain link at all. What has been described as a security fence is really an architectural six-foot-high, black wrought iron, a beautiful fence, which at the Gay Street side, where you have the entrances for the vehicular entrance that would be used, for example, during fairtime and at Emmett Festival, there will be lovely brick pillars and there will also be a, what we call a man gate, a walk-through gate for individuals that will also be accented with brick pillars and there'll be landscaping there. So this is going to be a lovely piece of architectural fence, not a security fence in the sense of the word. I'd also want to make clear something else I asked Denny to clarify, and that is, I don't think it's abundantly clear to the public at this point that the alleyway will in fact still be intact. It will be occluded with a pair of swinging, again, six-foot, as I understand, wrought iron gates that are locked and that lock will be openable by emergency services, EMS, fire, through the familiar lockbox mechanism where they carry a key that allows them access at any time. I further asked Mr. Taylor, will it happen in the event that one of your neighbors on that block had a construction issue or something that required a construction vehicle, a bucket truck or something of that sort, to require access? And the response from Mr. Taylor was that, well, we're going to do what any good neighbor would do. We're going to be as helpful as we can. All that is going to happen. And this also speaks, Susan, perhaps, to your symmetry issue. Visually, somebody from standing on the square looking down that alley, with the exception of a see-through, six-foot, black wrought iron fence, there'll be a road there. So, I mean, the symmetry is not going to be disturbed. There's also going to be abundant landscaping as you would look to the left from Public Square, looking down that alley, where the gate that will again be closed late at night only, but open during the day. So I don't think that there should be concerns about the visual appeal. In fact, I would venture to say that the nicely landscaped alley that separates the banks to the west, and this will rival for what is the nicest-looking alley entrance off of the square. And so I think it's going to be quite attractive. We are not going to have a concentration camp-style fence surrounding the parking lot. Those are the only two things that I wanted to make clear because I wasn't convinced that there was clarity on those two subjects. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. John?
I don't have anything to say at this moment. Thank you.
Ms. Dale.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Fair.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think we all have tried to consider all things. We've had numerous phone calls, emails, communication in every way from both sides. This has been very divisive. And I think once people see and understand, as Sam has alluded to, I think they will be very pleased to have this on the square. I was and still am very opposed to a portico that comes way out into the square. I would not be able to uphold that. But that is no longer the case. And with that, I think with all things considered, I think we have reached fruition on what we need to do here.
I'll come back to you. You've been...
I can't talk now.
Susan.
Thank you, John. At this point, I have seen nothing since our last meeting, which really prevents me from voting in favor of this legislation. I have visited the businesses on the southeast section of the square as well as the block directly to the south of the square. All of the people that I talked to in those businesses, the managers, the owners, were present and they don't seem to have any issue with this hotel easement. And none of them have any issue with the alley or anything. They are all very supportive when I talk to them individually and I wanted them to, you know, give me honest answers. And I felt like I received honest answers from them, that they were, they did not feel like this was any kind of an intrusion on, you know, their businesses or what they were going to be doing, but rather would be a wonderful addition to what, you know, they were trying to do. So based upon that and talking to them, then I feel much more positive about, you know, voting in favor of this legislation.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. I have said quite a bit to this point. I still have had a couple of people I had talked to today. The people I have spoke to, I have received emails like everybody else did for it. I also had several people, the biggest oppositions I've said in the past is giving up city property on the public square. I think, you know, I kind of jotted this down. Whenever I do this, I think of Charlie Dyson. I often wonder what Charlie would think of what's going on today, being one that was here in Melbourne so long. But if you look at the process this resolution has taken to get to this point, it is very important. We know it's very important to both sides. Those for it, the easement of 26 feet, and those who would like to see the square remain the same as it's been for years. I had a picture I showed and I think way back when the hotel was the original hotel and how it was a perfect square. And the insides, I should say it's designed as a square because it probably measures not exactly square. We had that conversation early, Cameron and I. But the inside's also a square and how that footprint years ago is still pretty much that way even with the six-foot easement that was there since '71. I asked about scaling it back, maybe if a, on him like they use it at Lafayette and Marietta, Plan C, and I was told, you know, that wouldn't work, it wouldn't even, an option. I would like to see the resolution amended if possible. I've talked to some people tonight. I don't think it's going to be possible. I would be for giving the six-foot, like was given in 1971, and put it back on the same footprint that it was on before they started tearing it down. I'm not against this beautiful hotel. Anybody I've talked to is not against this hotel. There's concern about building on the square. There's concern, I've had a person say, Mike, this is the public square. This is not a dead-end alley with a lot at the end next to somebody's house. It's the public square. You're giving up a very public piece of land. And that's not just one person. And I have to agree with them. I can't support this resolution as it's written. I don't know, I don't think I'll find any support for amending. If you do speak up now, I'll ask for the amendment. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins?
I've also thought long about this. And this building they're asking for, this easement, is a little bigger than the easement that was there before. Things have changed. You know, the ADA rules that you have to have in order to have the walkway going into it, it's a little different hotel than it was when the previous Curtis was built. So things have changed and we need to adapt to those changes and I think this hotel will be a real addition to our city. And as I said at our last meeting, as I look at decisions like this, I try to look 25 years in the future, what would people think about the decision we make as they look back on this in the future? And I think, I think the decision is correct to move forward with the easement in the building of this hotel.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. I haven't changed my position since the beginning, so I've been supportive of this project. But I think we should all be pleased that with the help of the local media, that we've aired this pretty well. This isn't something someone can say 10 years from now, gee, I didn't know they were going to do that. So even though I know each and every one of you probably, when you received your email, received your phone call, received your letters, or saw items in the paper, that maybe you were heading in the wrong direction. But the bottom line is that we've heard and you've heard from them. The other issue, I don't have a vote. You all have to vote. But I think that's what we're all about. We're a legislative body. You've had the opportunity to hear it from all sides and in the end, you have to make the decision. And I think we're all believe that this new hotel is good. There are some easements involved with this that you are hearing about. In the end, you make the best decision. That's best not only for today, but for the future of our city. And so I'm confident you'll do that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Now, would there anybody like to make a comment? I want to make sure I do my due diligence here and going to three separate readings and I've canvassed the downtown. I didn't go to every single establishment downtown, but of the five that I visited, I only had one establishment that said no and the other came from a letter. So it was a, you know, four-one, people in favor of, and those are people downtown. And I think people, if you read, if you look at this ordinance and the way it is done, it takes in a lot of consideration of not doing anything to try to destroy downtown's commercial ability or whatever, but it's going to enhance it. And, you know, and I, like I said, I've worked with some gentlemen that are sitting out here and some different, and I think that, you know, I just, I really think it's in the best interest for the city. That's just my own two cents worth. Anybody want to comment on anything at all?
John, I would like to be reassured that when this is moving forward and when it nears completion, that we will see what has been most recently given to us with the curb on the corner reduced as it is shown in that most recent draw.
Correct.
I want to be sure, yes, that that corner is not a protrusion out into the traffic pattern.
Correct.
And I want to be sure that, yes, in fact, the canopy will not be out further than what we anticipate that it will be. It's going to be about halfway back where the lines were for the parking places on the square. The curbing will be out a little bit into that, correct? And the canopy pillars will be there.
Yeah, that's the area that's covered by the easement. Yes, yes.
Yes. So, you know, so long as we're assured that it's solid where we're seeing it right now.
If I might ask and clarify, Mrs. Vale, looking at the copy of the easement over there that's shaded, I'm quite certain that the corner you're referring to, and that has been a concern of mine since the beginning as well, that is not an easement. So I would read that as saying, Mr. Glass, that's under your control. Is that correct? Our control? The corner, the corner radius.
Are you thorough about the radius? The radius is cut back where you asked to have it cut back to you.
Right. But that...
And it's not part of the easement.
That's not part of the easement. So we're, city is going to determine that.
Is that all the cost of the project or not the city to change that? Is that the cost of the project or not the city to change that? Hundred percent the cost of the project, yes. Thank you.
So last chance, anybody that would like to say anything or, you know, come to the, I want to make sure that we don't get gigged for doing something that we haven't looked at in as best we can look at. Does that make sense? Okay.
You know, John, I think when, whether it's in your home or where it is, sometimes we have to make decisions together. And not everybody gets everything they want, but we have to together try to come up with what is very best for all of us, whether it's in our homes or whether it's in our community. And I hope that those who aren't real happy about whichever way it goes tonight will be understanding and have open minds and be watchful and thankful.
The other thing too, and Cameron and I have discussed this and everybody has this in this particular resolution, and that is if for some reason that building, that hotel burns down, gets destroyed, the act does God or whatever, it automatically reverts back to what the original footprint was. So it's not really sort of cut in stone, but it's the best we can do, correct?
John, if I could add, and I wanted, I was going to wait till the end, but maybe I should do it now, because I know there's been some plans already submitted for some certain items. I just want to make sure, you know, we all know by who we listen to here tonight, it's going to pass. We just haven't voted. But at this point, I just want to make sure that if there's any variance to any code, that it comes to the proper committees prior to whatever happens first. That the committees, if there's a variance of any kind, whether it be a sign, a water pump, whatever that may be, that it goes to the proper committees for a vote as well. So, and I'm sure we're, you know, in the early process of plans, but I just don't want to make sure that we have signs put up or something like that that's happened on other buildings without going to proper committees first. Thank you.
Anything else?
And that's not a directive to the nazis, signs on other buildings. I'm talking about other projects. I just want to make sure there are people on committees that look at variances. Thank you.
Mrs. Noel, please call the rule.
Mr. Francis?
No.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
No.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Abstain.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
By a vote of four to two with one abstention, this resolution passes. Would like to point out that, you know, we had a lot of discussion on this and then had three readings. But once we do pass a resolution, we need, as an organization and as a city, stick behind it and move forward. You know, we can have differences of agreement as we vote, but now it's time to move forward now that we've made a decision. That concludes resolutions for third reading. We now have resolutions for second reading. The first one is Resolution 2014-34. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-34. A resolution to submit application for the FY 2014 Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Allocation Program.
Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. This would be for second reading this evening, but I'm going to ask that we might suspend the rule requiring three separate readings for Resolution 2014-34.
Second. Been moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Vale?
Mr. President, I would move for passage of Resolution 2014-34.
Second. Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Vale?
This, the reason we want to pass this this evening is because in joining together with the county on both this resolution and the next one will help us to make a gain of $100,000 additional funding. And Mr. Mayor, perhaps you want to address this?
Nancy, I agree. This is the, what we call the formula program. It's $75,000. And so this is basically a gift to the city and I think the fact that you've suspended the rules lets us complete the paperwork more quickly. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. The next resolution for second reading is Resolution 2014-35. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-35. A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the FY 2014 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Grant.
Mrs. Vale?
Mr. President and council, if you will notice, in Section 1, you received a replacement copy this evening because we needed to have added a comma after the word commissioners in Section 1 and a comma after the word agreement so that it reads more clearly that the city is the designated grantee. Our city auditor will be handling all this. Okay?
This is second reading?
No. We're going to ask, but the reason, I just wanted that, to clarify that so that you know why you got that this evening. I would move for suspension of the rule requiring the, requiring more than one, or requiring three readings, I'm sorry, for Resolution number 2014-35.
Second. Been moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the reason we'd like to pass this this evening is in order to expedite getting the paperwork achieved and going after these funds because this is a competitive grant. So we want to make sure that we're up front and that we get the funds. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for...
Can we get a motion on the table first?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, all right, yes. I would move that we pass Resolution 2014-35.
Second. Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Vale?
And as I said, we're ready for the mayor to make any additional comments he'd like to.
Mrs. Vale, thank you. I think you've stated it pretty well. This is the first time that the city and the county have joined together for a community development block grant and the benefit of that is, of course, $100,000. It's $850,000 totally. Usually we would be allowed a $300,000 grant in the county in the neighborhood of $350,000. So this is a good thing. And the fact that you've always stated that Terry Scott has agreed to be the administrator of it, I think this means that the county and the city will work together on projects.
And you did tell us that use of this grant money will be within 24 months rather than within 18 months.
We have 24 months to spend the money. That's correct. It gives us a little better time. We talked about target areas and every year that we've applied for these money, we always talk about target areas. In this particular case, the target area is pretty much open.
All right.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The final resolution for this evening is Resolution 2014-40. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-40. A resolution authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to record highway easements for the northeast and northwest corners of the intersection of West Chestnut and North Sandusky Streets.
Mr. Fair?
Like to give this a second reading tonight?
Okay. Resolution 2014-40 receives a second reading. That concludes the resolutions for second reading. We now move on to resolutions for first reading. The first one is Resolution number 2014-42. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-42. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-42 to its third and final reading, please.
I'll second.
Been moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2014-42, please.
Second.
Been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. Council, we have before you a donation to the Arbor Trust amount of $750 from the Town and Country Garden Club. And I think, Mrs. Carl, you donated that, you handed that check over last week?
I did.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah. Well, it, the Town and Country Garden Club has been very generous to the community in donations. They have fundraising, raising projects and people that are members of the club donate to the club. This particular contribution, a large part of this, was given by the family of Mrs. Snow and designated to be given to the city in her memory at that particular park on Gambier Street so that the rosebushes and some of the landscaping that are going to ultimately be there in place will be a place for her to be remembered.
And that was Ruth Snow and the park name right now is Gambier Street Park over there by Park Street.
No, but that's fine.
Any other input?
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The next resolution is Resolution 2014-43. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-43. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to pay bills pursuant to Section 5705.41 subsection D, then and now certification.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-43 to its third and final reading, please.
Second.
Been moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution 2014-43, please.
Second.
We moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier?
Thank you. Then and Now Certificate is when there's not a purchase order written. This is to serve Pro Licking County, an amount of $6,046.47 to take out of the account from damage claims. I believe this is when we're handling the sewer backup up behind Crowers.
Yeah, there were three homes that got flooded in the winter, and I called these people in to have it cleaned up and did not write the purchase order.
I wasn't even going to ask who didn't.
It was me. I... You actually transferred some money in to get that paid last time around.
And I know the work was done, and that's why we're passing it tonight to pay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-44. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-44. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the City of Mount Vernon to transfer certain funds.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I motion to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take Resolution 2014-44 to its third and final reading, please.
I'll second.
We moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier?
Move to adopt Resolution 2014-44, please.
Second.
We moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier?
Counsel, we have two transfers totaling $80,000. The first one for $75,000 wastewater system construction to account, wastewater system construction supervisor for $75,000, and workers' comp to account networking system for $5,000. Mr. Glass?
Okay.
Mr. Scott did not let me know what this was about, so I'll call on you, please. I don't really know what the one is.
See if I can give you a hand. On the wastewater, three years ago, we borrowed four or five million dollars for the total reconstruction out there at the wastewater treatment plant, all the electrical project. That project is winding down now. So Terry needed to transfer some money from the borrowed money, the wastewater improvement fund, into the construction engineering because the project ran over about a year, and we had full-time supervision there. Now, I know that sounds like a lot of engineering money, but the majority of that money, and Cameron could probably give us a better number, was recouped from penalties paid by the contractors. So...
Do you know what that is, Cameron? Not...
Yeah.
I hope that was a decent explanation.
Almost. I still thought the dollars were recouped.
All the dollars were recouped.
Okay.
So the $75,000 was paid, come back to...
$55,000 were recovered in liquidated damage charges on the project from two different contractors, and I think we had for contract engineering an additional $45,000. I haven't seen the piece of legislation you have in front of you, but that's probably incorporated in those numbers that Terry's put together. So any additional costs that we had because of this project drawn out has been recouped, and then we're probably $10,000 ahead on top of that.
Always like to be ahead. And the workers' comp to networking system?
Oh, yeah, that was actually, Terry said that's money he didn't account for when we were doing appropriations at the first of the year. He had accounted for the changes here in council chambers with screens and the intercom system, but the $5,000 which we'd had last year was a contract with Google, and that's how we store our information off-site in the cloud. So that's what it's for.
Nope.
Counsel? Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-45. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-45. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to sell to a surplus vehicle not needed for public use by the City of Mount Vernon to the Knox County Commissioners and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for the suspension of the rules requiring three readings and move this to the final reading.
Second.
We moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Siebel?
I would like to move for adoption of this resolution.
Second.
We moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Siebel?
Thank you. We have three new cruisers, and we're keeping one back in case we need it, and then that leaves us two freed up to move on. And we've been asked to help with children's services investigators. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so we would be giving the, well, we're selling them. We're going to get a lot of money for this, right? We're not going to sell it for less than a dollar, right? We're getting a whole dollar.
That's correct.
Okay, we're getting a dollar for this. And this would let them use it for children's services.
Sure, that's great. We sell it to the county commissioners. Talked to Sheriff Schaefer. He's using a 2001 vehicle. Maintenance has been high on it, and so this is a way we can support. This is an investigator's position, and we currently don't assist in any of those payments, salary, or benefits to that position. And although much of the investigation is done with people who live in the city, so this is an opportunity for us to participate.
And it's for the children, so it's very good. We want to take care of them. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one, if I could.
Okay, Mike?
I support this wholeheartedly. I just have a question. Do we need, do we have a written kind of agreement or anything that this is paying our part for children's services? You know, according to your letter, they're evidently wanting us to step up to the plate, and this is kind of how we did it. Do we need any kind of agreement that says this is what is agreed between us and the sheriff?
You know, the meeting that I mentioned in the letter to you was, we had an unusual situation developed. They had a person employed as investigator who then became ill and was off for some time. In the meantime, they brought a new person in. Person wanted to come back to work, and that's when I had the meeting with him, wanting to know if the city would participate in paying for the services of one of those investigators. And after having some discussion, I indicated that we would not do that. In the meantime, about several months have passed, the person who had come back to work now has found employment in another county doing similar work. So that left us with just one. So the request to help pay for the wages or benefits has now gone away. This is an opportunity that, Mike, and your question's good. To my knowledge, we don't have, this is actually a transfer, and Chip may want to comment on that. He's been part of the discussion on that.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up to counsel is the discussion had been that we would just give this card to the commissioners. Well, the statutes don't allow us to give it, but we can sell it for a dollar. So that's why it's written the way it is.
Any other discussion?
So we just, and it's fine just the way, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything we had to do besides a handshake agreement.
I asked the sheriff if he were going to paint it, if he was going to paint it black and gold, but he said not. He would not be doing that, so...
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution 2014-46. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-46. A resolution approving the appointment of Catherine Burley to the Shade Tree Commission and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request the rule requiring three separate readings be suspended and that this resolution be taken to its third and final reading.
I second.
We moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. President, I should think now would be the time to ask this question. In Section 1, it says June 18th...
Wait, we're only discussing suspension right now.
But if we suspend the rules to pass this, then we want it to be corrected if, in fact, it's not correct. It says commencing immediately and ending June 18th of 2014.
That's when the term is up, Mrs. Vale.
So we're not going to extend her term.
We'll be back next month.
You'll bring us another piece next month.
For her to have her own term. This is really, Chip is correct. This is serving the remaining period of Mrs. Fair's term.
Sometimes we've written it that it would cover both, so I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
A vote on the suspension? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Francis?
Move to adopt Resolution 2014-46.
I second.
We moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'll just look over to the mayor and ask him if he has anything to say about this. I know there was a question just brought up just a few seconds ago.
Kate Burley is replacing Mrs. Fair. As you all know, she served as a leadership and did resign just before the end of her reappointment. So we were looking for someone to take this. I did call around and had support for Kate Burley. I think she's active in a variety of organizations, and so I would appreciate you bringing, we are short a member on there, as you know. So I would appreciate your support for this. But as pointed out by Mrs. Vale, this is the unexpired term, so we'll be back for our own term.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. The final resolution for this evening is Resolution 2014-47. Mrs. Noel?
Resolution number 2014-47. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the restructuring of the northeast corner of Worcester and McGibney Roads and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Fair?
Thank you. Now, I understand in this, oh, I need to ask a question.
Okay.
This, is that immediate now that we need to do this?
We do need to move forward if you can help us out, because we had hoped, maybe I could explain now, or should I wait, or...
Well, we'll probably ask the suspending of the rules and then discuss.
Okay, I'd like to ask for suspension of the rules require three separate readings so that Resolution 2014-47 can be taken in its third and final reading.
I'll second that. We moved in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension?
Mr. President, I guess just by way of discussion, if it's germane, if his explanation is germane to the reason why John was asking for the suspension, it might be helpful for us to know why he wants to do it before we suspend, if that's permissible.
Okay.
Do you agree?
As long as it's for the suspension.
Yeah, just for the suspension, yeah. Okay, the reason we'd like to have it immediately is we've been shopping for proposals on the project because we had estimated that it would be under $50,000, and we wouldn't have to come to council for approval. And the proposals that we've gotten are over $50,000. So we need to go through the formal bidding process, which will take us another two months if we don't do it once we get approval. So if we can get it now instead of the middle of June, we can still get it done this summer.
We're also on a timeline to get that done first of last month, right?
Absolutely.
It's another reason we've got to move it up.
Okay. And since we don't, we only meet once in June, it'll be a long time before it'd have three readings. So that's why we're asking for suspension of the rules. Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Fair?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for the adoption of Resolution 2014-47.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mr. Fair?
I'm not hearing any in this, you know, Sam, you brought the point. Michael?
Well, I do have a question. I mean, we're, three years ago, we were $20,000. Now we can't do it for 50. What is the projected cost now? Do you have any idea?
Approximately $60,000 to $70,000.
And that'll come out of, because we budgeted 50, correct?
Yes.
So $20,000's coming from...
We'll chip in.
We'll have Chip in.
I'm sure we worked it out, I'm sure we worked out with Mr. Scott, but everybody realizes...
Yes, Mike, to answer your question, once we found out that the two proposals, one was 60, one was 70, clearly, we had to come to counsel for it.
And hasn't the owner already started his part of the, the bargain? Then it already tore up?
He's put sidewalks in, but we don't have to deal with him at all.
But, but I think we all felt that we were gonna try to bring this project along, kind of, uh, consistent with when he was bringing his property along too. So, I think that's why Cameron put this together, why we thought maybe we could do it, uh, without going to the bid process, but that didn't happen, so...
I agree. I just, just a question I want to know. Thank you.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
This is a project that we have sought to have done for several years now, and it is a safety issue. The corner of Worcester and McGimney Roads is really a very dangerous corner with a lot of traffic, and I think it's, it's imperative that we move along as rapidly as possible and get this achieved yet this summer.
Any other comments?
Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. That concludes the resolutions. We only have one ordinance for reading, uh, this evening, and that's, uh, ordinance for third reading. Ordinance 2014-07. Mrs. Noel?
Ordinance number 2014-07. An ordinance to amend Sections 303.08, 359.01, 359.02, 359.03, 359.04, and 359.99 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon relative to vehicles impounded by the police department and the disposal of such vehicles.
Mrs. Seville?
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of this ordinance.
Second.
Been moved in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Uh, we have had a chance to discuss this in public. We've had meetings, and Mr. McConville has done a wonderful job to cover all angles so that we will never have a problem again about something that's happened with an impounded vehicle. Uh, Mr. McConville, would you like to say anything further about this?
Thank you, Mrs. Seville. I don't have anything.
You're talked out, okay. Anybody else have any questions on this?
Looks pretty clear to me.
Okay, then, let's...
Mrs. Noel?
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Barone?
Yes.
Mrs. Vale?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting, and we're now ready for remarks to the administration. Mayor Mavis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Earlier this evening, from 5:00 to 7:00, we did have, uh, opportunity to, for people to come in and, uh, visit the new, uh, uh, service building, which is gonna house our street department and our wa, water wastewater department. Many people will remember that in 2000, when we built the new, uh, water treatment plant, we had a, a building like this in the plans, but when bids came in, uh, we did not have enough money to pay that, so it was delayed. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, that our street department and our water wastewater department, uh, really lived in, in, uh, facilities that needed to be upgraded, and so if, uh, if you have the opportunity to go there, you'll see that this is a building that we and the City of Mount Vernon can be proud of. Uh, as I said, we were disappointed. We had, uh, a very small turnout this evening, uh, but that doesn't take away from the, uh, building's asset, uh, to our community, uh, that will, uh, be there for years to come. So, I, I want to tell everybody, we are moving in. They're not completely moved in, moved in yet, but both departments are, uh, doing so, and, and it will take a while to complete all the moving of tools and that sort of thing, but, uh, we appreciate for those people that did come out. And, uh, I think with that, we did get, I guess, one other thing. We did get bids on the, uh, Fairgrounds water line today. Uh, you've all heard both, uh, Dave and I and Cameron talking about the necessity of getting the bids there, uh, and getting those, uh, in. They did open bids today. We had five bidders. The, the bid was, uh, low was, apparent low was 101, 847. They, uh, the high was 141, 165. The estimate, uh, was 128,500. So, we certainly had bids that were in the neighborhood, and Cameron's in the process of reviewing those bids, so we expect to take that to Board of Control on Thursday, uh, this, this Thursday, and, uh, would expect to, to move ahead with that. So, fair time's coming, and it looks like we can get our water line, and Cameron, I'm, hoping that you're supporting all of this, uh, dialogue. Thank you. I guess with that, that's all I have.
Just make sure we're not responsible for hoarding up the fair. Mr. Glass?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. McConville?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Cameron, when you started that project for the garage that we were in tonight, if you remember right, I said, "We don't need a Taj Mahal, we need a, a workshop," and it's a very nice workshop, but not a Taj Mahal. Cement floors, I mean, it, it looks like what it's used for, and I appreciate...
Yes.
Watching the dollars the way you did. It's a very nice building. Number two, I'm sure MVU, MVNU will run a very nice hotel and run it in a, in a manner that the city would be very proud of. With that being said, on November 25th, we had promised some people that we'd take care of the alley that is blocked off the dead end. The Homestead Club and also the, uh, Mr. McCordle, who had a property on the corner. We talked about the ugliness of the alley, and we all agreed that we would do something, whether it's us as the contractor, to clean up that alley, so when the Homestead Club drops off at the back door, they wouldn't have to look at the mess that's back there now. So, I hope in the process of what, looking at what we're doing with the other part of the alley, we're also looking at what we can do to improve the looks on the one that we have behind the Homestead too. We don't want to forget about that, and it's been a while. Thank you.
Mrs. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, I really enjoyed participating, participating in the Ariel Foundation Park 5K run as a walker on Saturday morning. Uh, it was really great to see, uh, the good turnout and also to see the progress that's being made on this park that's going to be the centerpiece of Mount Vernon City Parks. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to thank Sharon Fair for working on the Shade Tree Commission. She did it out of work for love. She really loved what she did. She worked hard in all the little parks around. She did lots of research, and she put her heart and soul into it. We were very lucky to have her, so I want everybody to appreciate what she's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fair?
Thanks, Jess. I would like to make, uh, my annual pitch here for Memorial Day. Now, Memorial Day falls on the same day that we have council, so it will be the next day. And, um, just to share with people so they, that they understand that Memorial Day is not a, it's not a sale day, it's not a holiday, it's an observance. It's the only observance that this country honors. An observance basically means this. If you are a citizen, you, you have one of two options or both, and that is you attend this, you go to the cemetery, or you participate and watch a parade. So, observance is, is really interesting, um, because that's exactly what it is, is an observance. So, for all people who have, veterans who are past, present, and even future veterans, um, you know, we owe a, a great deal dedicat, that, we owe a lot of dedication to those people who have kept our, our govern, or our democracy running. So, any vet you may see or whatever, please say thanks for your service. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. Mrs. Vale?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly uphold what you're saying, John. As a member of the Daughters of American Revolution, Memorial Day is very important to us. Susan and I both are members of the Daughters of American Revolution. The landscaping on East Chestnut Street and Edgewood Road, will that also be completed before the end of this month?
Yeah, it's all part of the projects.
Okay, so the grass will be planted and everything will be completed. All right, thank you.